We ask for eyes that are free from blindness, so that we might see each other as brothers and sisters, one and equal in dignity. We ask for ears that will hear the cries of all those who are abandoned, neglected, or ignored. We ask for minds and hearts that are open to hearing the voice of leaders who will bring us closer to your kingdom. What we pray for is discernment, that we may choose leaders who hear your word, live your love, and keep in the ways of your truth to guide us to your kingdom of justice and peace. We ask all this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, and through the power of your Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, 5:30, November 5th, 2018, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yep.
We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members. Good evening. Under ordinances and resolutions, we have to add a fifth item, which will be the Winter Sun final plat, which our city planner will be talking about. And then, under new business, at the end of the meeting, we need to add an item, Personnel Committee Report.
Any other additions? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Anthony. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both saying aye, that motion carries. Item D is public hearing tonight. I have a public hearing for the vacation of Deerfoot Lane, and I'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, members of the council. On October 1st, the city council accepted a petition to, a vacation petition for Deerfoot Lane. At that time, they also, I also requested set a public hearing date for today, November 5th, 2018. This vacation request is for the platted right-of-way of Deerfoot Lane, blocks 1 and 2 of the Moon Valley addition to City of Fergus Falls. General location is Buckridge Lane to East Hermis. If you refer to the map, it's shaded area in green is what is the subject matter. So since then, public notifications have been sent out, along with letters to the adjacent abutting residents, notifying them of this meeting. So at this time, prior, we're gonna have a public hearing at this time. It would be up for the council to see if they want to proceed with the vacation or not. If they choose to proceed with the vacation, I'll be requesting a motion directing the city attorney to prepare the vacation ordinance. So at this time, I'm requesting open the public hearing for this vacation.
Thank you, Brian. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this, please step to lectern and state your name and address. Seeing no one, I will close the hearing. It's back to the council. We will need a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance to vacate Deerfoot Lane.
Oh, with that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions for our city engineer or our city attorney? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both saying aye, that motion carries. There are no bids to award this evening. There are no petitions or communications. Under the consent agenda, there's a copy in your packet. There's also a copy on the board. If anyone has any of the items they'd like to remove, to discuss individually, we will do that now.
Your Honor, I have a question on number seven.
Seven? We'll remove that one. Anyone else? If there's no one else, is, I would entertain a resolution to approve the first six items under the consent agenda.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Ever.
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Artson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Sorry, Hicks.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Anthony, you got a question regarding the resolution approving the budget adjustments?
Yeah, I was just curious if Bill would know, we're reallocating $500 from the city council travel budget to the attendance of the Strong Towns presentation on December 6th. And that was $500, and the tickets are $20, and I just wondered how many people were going.
We don't know how many, and this was a request that came through the mayor, so.
Sure.
Do you want to address that?
You bet. So, working with the downtown Riverfront Council, we thought it would be a good idea to invite anyone who volunteers to be on a city commission, board, committee, to, for the city to pick up the tab to attend this meeting as well, because they are volunteers for the city, so we thought it would be... So we don't know if we'll use that entire $500, but we'd hope that we would get a lot of them to attend the meeting. That was the thought.
Right, thank you. With that, I'll make the motion to...
Resolution?
The resolution.
Got it, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Artson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under resolutions and ordinances, first item is a second reading ordinance, number 74-7 series, which is the rezoning of property located at 2010 West Lincoln Avenue from B6 to B2. This has been, the committee has had a first reading, so if there's any questions? Not, roll call, please.
Ever.
Yes.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Artson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution designated the Holiday Festival as a community festival and waiving the fees, and I will call on, that is, Over the River Holiday Festival, which is in conjunction with the Christmas tree lighting. So I'm gonna call on Natia Bowman to let us know some of the things that they've been working on, and Clara Beck as well. Welcome, Natia and Clara.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for having us. On behalf of the planning committee, Clara and I are up here to promote the Over the River Holiday Festival scheduled for Saturday, December 1st. Aside from celebrating the holiday season, the overarching goal of this event is to show the community how successful that we can be when we all come together and work towards a common goal. Secondary goals would be to boost the local economy with early holiday sales for our local businesses, and to enhance the exposure to the numerous artists participating in the art crawl, which Clara will talk about here in a minute. The event will kick off when stores open, with the art crawl, horse-drawn carriages, pedicabs, beginning at noon. A new element of this is going to be the outdoor holiday market, which would include craft and food vendors, as well as live music and kids' activities located on Court Street. Local musicians will be featured throughout the day, as well as the, this is really exciting, the 204th Army Brass Band quintet from Fort Snelling is coming down to perform as well. Like last year, we will gather here at City Hall for carols and cider, before walking over to Wright Park to witness the tree lighting ceremony and the fireworks display. So Clara, can I have you come up and talk a little bit? I'm gonna have her talk about the art crawl and the dance and desserts portion before I finish.
Yeah, so, um, this event, I think, is gonna be a lot of fun. In years past, the arts community has been hosting an art crawl, mostly downtown. Artists at the Cadets Building, who live upstairs, have opened up their studios, and people can come through, see their work, make purchases. Last year, the Cadets opened up its back common space for a pop-up market, and we had hundreds and hundreds of people through the door. It was a really, really great event. So the, the arts scene downtown is willing to be open for the full day of this event. We're gonna have stuff set up at Springboard for the Arts, at the Cadets Building. Center for the Arts is again hosting Dance and Dessert, which they've done for many, many years. It's a fundraiser for the Fergus Falls School of Dance. So those tickets sell out pretty early, and then all of those people stay downtown from about 2 o'clock till 4 o'clock, when the performance is over. And then they go across the street to the senior center, where they can have dessert. And then a lot of those people, if they're downtown already, last year, we saw them come through the art crawl space, so that was a lot of fun. So we're really excited this year that the arts community is getting to work more broadly with the rest of the community to put together a very cohesive event. Last year, it was a little bit more piecemeal, with the tree lighting and the arts stuff happening kind of at the same time, but not being planned together. So this year, we all know what time everything is happening, where everything is happening, and we're putting together a cohesive marketing plan that I think is gonna draw a lot of people, so we're very excited.
Thanks, Clara. I know Guy Taylor, Public Works Director, you've been involved in these meetings as well. Do you have anything you want to add from the cities? And Chief Mucko, I might add, as well, has been involved in these meetings. Guy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think Natia will cover it all.
Okay.
Hey, Natia, would you do me a favor? Would you tell, just to give an example of the broad community involvement, talk about all the different musical groups that are gonna be performing throughout the day?
Okay, so...
Sorry, with the Civic Orchestra?
Yep, so the events are, the music is gonna kick off at 12:30 here at City Hall, with the community orchestra doing a 30-minute presentation. And then, we have a folk art singer, Mona LaValle, who is going to be the first musician in the holiday tent over on Court Street. And then, the Fergus Falls Brass Band, either a quintet or a quartet, will be performing. And then, we have Hillcrest Worship Team performing. And then, front and center will finish off the Christmas carols here, again, at City Hall, right before the tree lighting. And then, the band from Fort Snelling, like I mentioned before, they are going to be playing the Star Spangled Banner in conjunction with the fireworks display over at Wright Park. So, yes, we've got a whole day of musical events. So, last year, we had about 500 attendees that we guessed with minimal promotion. This year, with the addition of the fireworks and several months of promotion already behind us, including radio and TV broadcasts, we hope to triple that number. As a collaborative effort between the business, arts, and nonprofit communities, as well as the City of Fergus Falls, this event is not aimed at profiting any one organization, but rather to attract people to our community. So, I'm here to request three items for your consideration. The first one, as you've done with Shop Moving Groove and Summerfest, we would ask that you declare this a community event and waive the fees for equipment. This required equipment is listed in the special events permit application, and it's around $500. The second item is, considering Dance and Desserts has been a long-running event in this community, and it is part of our days events, we ask that you would consider waiving the rental fee for the senior center, which is where the desserts portion of that fundraiser takes place. And the last item is, the newest addition to our schedule of events is the fireworks display. We're looking at a $5,000 budget. With help from Leighton Broadcasting, they are going to be promoting this event region-wide, and we believe that this alone is going to draw in very large crowds. So we're currently seeking sponsors, and we would ask that the city consider a $1,500 sponsorship for, or to jumpstart our fundraising efforts. With this, you would receive a platinum-level recognition, including naming rights to the display, banner advertising, radio, and print advertising. Before I end, I'd just like to close with one of my favorite quotes from Coretta Scott King. I'm a quote person. "The greatest of community," or "the greatness, excuse me, of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." Now, I can't speak for the whole of the planning committee, but what I've experienced over the past few months is that there are countless, kind-hearted citizens within this community that have hope to strengthen this community's bond. And an event like this, I think, is a really great step forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Natia. Any questions, Council members? Rod?
Yeah, thank you. As part of the committee, I'll be coordinating the service club involvement. We're going to have volunteers from Kiwanis, Surtoma, Sunrise Rotary, and others as ambassadors during this event, so we'll be wearing vests. And I guess I'd personally encourage each of the council members to come out, sign up, put on a vest for an hour, and be an ambassador, as we expect quite a few people want to town. You can see me, if you're willing to sign up for that. And Cornerstone Community Church is gonna open their doors all day for a space to warm up and just to get out of the weather if it's bad, so it'd be a nice event.
Yep, and in addition to that, I guess, we are going to also have bonfires strategically placed, so there will be other, you know, more festive warming opportunities for you as well.
And the fire chief has been involved.
Yes.
Any other questions for Natia? So the first one is pretty straightforward, and that's the designated a community event. That would do, you can do that by resolution, and that would then waive the fees. I think it is truly, obviously, in my opinion, worthy of being a community event. So I guess we, I would entertain that.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Justin and Rod, thank you. Roll call, please.
Ever.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Artson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
And then the second, well, and I believe that covers the senior center as well, right?
Will that...
That's part of the event. We can clarify if it doesn't, we can get that clarification. But I guess, I would suggest with the 1,500, we would ask Bill to come back with a recommendation of where he might think that that could come from in the budget that's not planned. Would that be?
It is. Should I? Do you want me to come back?
If you're ready for it, go ahead, Bill.
Well, we talked about one item already. You know, we're moving 500 from the council on travel budget, 'cause you haven't been spending as much this year as, you know, you typically would in a year. So, there was $4,700 left in that budget. We're moving that 500, which we may not spend all of that. But you'd still have room, considering we're already in November, if you wanted to move 1,500 from there. That's acceptable.
I would offer that resolution, that we move the 1,500 from the council.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Darren.
I'll defer to Trip.
It's a resolution. Bill? Roll call, please.
Ever.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Artson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Natia.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council.
Thank you, Clara. Thanks to everyone for your work on that. Item number three is a resolution approving the city council Planning Commission Task Force members to review the city developments and review processes. This is something that we talked at about the joint meeting with the city, with the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, and I worked with Planning Commission Chair Jeff Stanislavski, along with Anthony Hicks, who suggested the task force. And the names we came up with are before you. There's four. I'll just make a comment. I know at the meeting, we discussed having four council members, three Planning Commission members, and two members of the public. After talking with both the Planning Commission Chair, the city attorney, and the city administrator, really didn't see a reason that we couldn't have the four Planning Commission members, because, as we talked, they're not, they're not taking action. They're just making recommendations. All we'll require is that the meetings are noticed for three days, which I think is a good thing. I think that provides openness and transparency, and that it also gives us a chance to get a good balance, I feel, on that committee. So, there's the names that are before you. If anyone has any questions, feel free to ask.
Your Honor, I should probably just add that we had interest from the community at large, and we ended up with four members there, as opposed to two, that suggested so. And the objective is that, you know, it's, will be a short number of meetings. The goal is, you know, initial meeting would be to set the goal of the process, and then, you know, to conduct no more than three meetings after that, and include staff to go over the process, because they're the ones that are gonna have to implement it, and then come back to the council with a recommendation. So, hopefully, it's a short, succinct kind of meeting group.
And I, for the public, I guess I should have read the names. I didn't. I'll just read them real quick. From the Fergus Falls City Council, Rod, Speedo, Anthony, Hicks, Scott, Rachel, and Brent Thompson. From the Fergus Falls Planning Commission, Jeff Stanislavski, Al Kramer, Laurel Kilde, and Ruth Rosengren. Community at Large members would be Gerald Bremel, or Bermal, I'm sorry, Nancy Heck, Jake Crone, and Lori Mullin.
I'll offer the resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Artson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. I've lost my agenda. All right. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the City of Fergus Falls to act as a legal sponsor for a small city's grant from the Department of Economic Employment and Development, Employment and Economic Development, to provide in-kind contributions in estimated $5,000 for staff time and office supplies. Commitment of $40,000 for leverage funds, and I don't see Michael Olson here. So Amy, would you speak to this, please?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. As indicated in the memo included in the packet, the HRA is seeking to apply for small cities development program funds, which they did come before you earlier this year, to gain authorization to start surveying for that work in the geography that is referenced on the map, from Channing to Vasa and Calvin to Arlington approximately. This program has been used in the past in the City of Fergus Falls to provide single-family rehab opportunities. Most recently, a grant wrapped up in 2017 that ultimately supported 17 homes in renovation with a forgivable loan fund up to $25,000 per renovation. There are income qualifications to look at this, to access these dollars, should the HRA be awarded the funding, again, to cover that geography. The last program approved in 2017, the last application, was funded with some city dollars to provide leverage dollars in the amount, I believe also of $40,000, similar to what the request is for this round. Fund 264 was used for that source of funding, and that is a flexible pool of dollars that we have available. It funds the revolving loan fund for the facade and economic development and LED lighting conversion program loan funds, as well as been used for special studies and matching grant needs for this. And then, the city's responsibility and the in-kind contribution does relate to the funds going in and out in different various paperwork pieces, because the city is the holder of those dollars, should the grant be successful. So, hopefully, I represented the information from the HRA appropriately. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Amy? If not, I'd entertain that resolution.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ever.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Artson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
That resolution is approved. Item number five will be a resolution accepting the final plat for Winter Sun addition, and I would call on our city planner, Ryan Pitlook.
Hey, after three months, you got it. He has got a muller. All right, thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Before you this evening is a final plat. This is the final plat of Winter Sun. To give you a little bit of location, it is located on Amy Drive, north of Otter Tail Drive. The property is owned R4. The action is actually going to be replotting, replating 10 townhome lots into five single-family lots. This plat does have some history. There was the plumery plat, a handful of setback variances, and the vacation of Amy Court was approved by this body on July 16th of 2018. The final plat was approved by the Planning Commission with a vote of 6 to 0 on October 22nd of 2018. Here is a copy of the plat. As you can see, Amy Drive forms an H, roughly an H shape. Amy Drive would be vacated. A new Amy Court would be dedicated, and there would be five lots that would receive their access off of that. So those would be for five single-family lots. And the next slide, sorry. So the plat has been reviewed by city staff. The plat does meet the requirements of city code. As mentioned, there were variances for the front, side, and rear setbacks that were granted by the city council on July 16th. Amy Court was vacated by the city council on July 16th as well. Staff does recommend approval of the final plat of Winter Sun. There are two courses of action that the council can go for tonight. They can make a motion to approve. Should the council choose to approve the Winter Sun final plat, a motion should be made to approve the resolution approving the final plat. The other option is that council could make a motion to deny this. Should council choose to deny the Winter Sun final plat, a motion should be made to deny the resolution to approve the final plat, stating the reasons for denial. That wraps up staff's presentation. Staff, if you have any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions from the council? If not, we would need a resolution to approve that final plat. Someone like to offer that? Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Ever.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Artson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Thank you, Ryan. Under presentation of claims tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,614,476.58. If there's any questions, I would direct them to our finance director, Bill Sonwell.
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Rod made the resolution. Scott?
I'm sorry, I'll second.
Scott second, yep. Roll call, please.
Ever.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Rupfer.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports, and there are no reports from staff or administrative officers. Under old and unfinished business, I'll call on Thad Olson to give us an update on the loan review board that he's been a part of and working on. Welcome, Thad.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilmember staff. I don't know how I drew this short stick, but here I am. I am serving as chair of the EIC, what remains of the EIC. That is also kind of a lame duck position right now, with the voting tomorrow. But what we've talked about in that group is, and what I want to share with you is, is kind of lay a foundation of what we have today, and how it's not the most efficient structure, how the Board of Business Development of Fergus Falls and the EIC came together and are making some recommendations of what we'd like to see happen with these two entities. But if we look at what we have today and that foundation, we currently have several loan fund pools. And some of those loan fund pools are administered by one arm of these two entities, the Business Development of Fergus Falls, and some are administered by the EIC. So not the most efficient process that we have. So if we have a business customer coming in and saying, hey, I would like to do a project in Fergus Falls, and they're eligible for one or more of these loan funds, they may be asked to go down several paths. It may be an application through Business Development of Fergus Falls, and it may be an application through the Economic Improvement Commission Loan Fund. Different applications, different processes, different timelines, different approval components. So, as you can see, it's not the most efficient process. So what we did is, we looked at the Business Development of Fergus Falls, who is the approval authority of some of the loans, and we met with the EIC and said, okay, how can we do this better? What we found is, the Business Development of Fergus Falls has been very successful in getting the dollars out into the community, and those dollars repay very well, so they have very low default. Very passionate board. We have some very active, longstanding board members that want to continue their function, and so we didn't want to lose that component. We didn't want to lose the success, the experience, and the passion. But then, on the EIC side, we have an entity. We have an actual 501(c)(4) entity that brings other values to the table. I mean, they can be a fiscal host. They can potentially apply for more dollars and grow a loan fund. So we wanted, and they have an active board as well. So we kind of looked at these two pieces and said, let's marry them together. And let's find a way to bring these two together and take the best of both, and come up with one entity. So what we really came down and decided to recommend is, is let's keep the EIC, the foundation of the EIC, that entity, the 501(c)(4), but let's have the Business Development of Fergus Falls board come and lead that entity. Then let's, I'll get to the board composition, but then let's make that operation of that entity look more like what's already happened with Business Development of Fergus Falls. Instead of managing the two loan funds, they would manage them all. They'd be one point source for a business, client coming in saying, I want to do something in Fergus Falls.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Artisan.
Yes.
Artisan.
Yes.
Artisan.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports, and there are no reports from staff or administrative officers. Under old and unfinished business, I'll call on Thad Olson to give us an update on the loan review board that he's been a part of and working on. Welcome, Thad.
Thank you, Mayor, city council member, staff. I don't know how I drew this short stick, but here I am. I am serving as chair of the EIC, what remains of the EIC. That is also kind of a lame duck position right now with the voting tomorrow. But what we've talked about in that group is, and what I want to share with you is kind of lay a foundation of what we have today, and how it's not the most efficient structure, how the Board of Business Development of Fergus Falls and the EIC came together and are making some recommendations of what we'd like to see happen with these two entities. But if we look at what we have today and that foundation, we currently have several loan fund pools, and some of those loan fund pools are administered by one arm of these two entities, the Business Development of Fergus Falls, and some are administered by the EIC. So not the most efficient process that we have. So if we have a business customer coming in and saying, hey, I would like to do a project in Fergus Falls, and they're eligible for one or more of these loan funds, they may be asked to go down several paths. It may be an application through Business Development of Fergus Falls, and it may be an application through the Economic Improvement Commission Loan Fund, different applications, different processes, different timelines, different approval components. So, as you can see, it's not the most efficient process. So what we did is we looked at the Business Development of Fergus Falls, who is the approval authority of some of the loans, and we met with the EIC and said, okay, how can we do this better? What we found is the Business Development of Fergus Falls has been very successful in getting the dollars out into the community, and those dollars repay very well, so they don't, they have very low default. Very passionate board. We have some very active, longstanding board members that want to continue their function, and so we didn't want to lose that component. We didn't want to lose the success, the experience, and the passion. But then on the EIC side, we have an entity, we have an actual 501(c)(4) entity that brings other values to the table. I mean, they can be a fiscal host, they can potentially apply for more dollars and grow a loan fund. So we wanted, and they have an active board as well. So we kind of looked at these two pieces and said, let's marry them together, and let's find a way to bring these two together and take the best of both and come up with one entity. So what we really came down and decided to recommend is, is let's keep the EIC, the foundation of the EIC, that entity, the 501(c)(4), but let's have the Business Development of Fergus Falls board come and lead that entity. Then let's, I'll get to the board composition, but then let's make that operation of that entity look more like what's already happened with Business Development of Fergus Falls. Instead of managing the two loan funds, they would manage them all. They'd be one point source for a business client coming in saying, I want to do something in Fergus Falls, and one place to go for those loan dollars, be administered by the Business Development of Fergus Falls. We would have to do some amendment to the operating agreement that the EIC has now. We'd have to amend it to look more like the Business Development of Fergus Falls operating agreement, and we would also recommend making some changes to bylaws. Some of the things we discussed that were strengths of the Business Development of Fergus Falls, we'd like to see continued, were term limits. Business Development of Fergus Falls has no term limits. Steve Brimhall, one of the members, I think he's been on the board for 30 years. And although some say that's too long, it also brings a lot of experience and a lot of passion, and so we don't want to, we don't really want to lose that. So as we looked at those two pieces, we also recommended, as far as the board composition, we looked at that and said, okay, the Business Development of Fergus Falls, the success you've had, we want that to continue, want you, you be the head of the EIC. You have some members that aren't as active, we need to fill those with more active positions or active members. Let's look to the EIC board as those members would like to fill those positions, and round out that board, let's look to the EIC first, before we go out into a more broader community positions to fill those memberships. The other two things we recommend on that board composition would be to have a city council member sitting on that, as well as a member of the newly-formed Greater Fergus Falls Corporation. I think by melding all those units together, we have more efficient, more comprehensive, and more collaborative structure to make things move forward. The other piece in all this is the administration of the intake of applications. Currently, the HRA is doing that on behalf of the Business Development of Fergus Falls. The HRA has an agreement with the city. They have proposed, and I don't know if it's come forward to the city yet, but they have talked about being that same entity for all the loan funds. So again, it's simplifying, it's making it more efficient, so a client, whether they're sourced through city staff or Greater Fergus Falls, we know where they go. They would go to Michael and his team, they would take the intake on the application form, they would do the underwriting for the board, and it would pass up through to the Business Development of Fergus Falls for approval. The other components of that board composition is we look at that being self-replacing, so as a member was wanting to leave, they would, the board would replace, find a member to replace it. We wanted to keep some autonomous-ness, if that's the right term, or even a word, from the city council, we want to keep it outside, because that's one of the other values Business Development of Fergus Falls has, is that an applicant doesn't have to go in front of the city council to be approved for a loan if there are no business subsidies in that loan request. They can go through the Business Development of Fergus Falls, get approved, and not run through a public meeting process. So with that, I think on behalf of the two boards, again, meeting and coming up with these terms, we recommend the merger of these two entities into one, taking the best of two separate and forming something more efficient, more collaborative, and more efficient. Any questions?
Questions to the council members at that end?
Good job, Thad.
Thank you, Thad. Okay, under, I'm just gonna go through a couple miscellaneous announcements before we get to the personnel committee update. First of all, I'll remind people that November 12th, Veterans Day holiday, most city offices and facilities will be closed. And of course, tomorrow is Election Day. Get out and vote. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Lynn Olson, as always, has done a tremendous job to get everything ready, to make sure that it's seamless. We thank you, Lynn, very, very much. [applause] Thank you, Lynn. Sincerely, thank you. But yes, polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Vote. And with that, I will ask Andrew Bremseth to give us the personnel update that he...
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, members. The Personnel Committee met earlier today. That committee is comprised of council member Appert and council member Artisan, and during that meeting today, Amy Baldwin has asked if she could provide a statement this evening regarding the meeting, so I'm asking Mayor, if you would recognize her to be able to provide the update on behalf of the committee.
Amy.
That is a lot taller than me.